Order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. McCallum, from the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, September 22, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. at the community center, 3500 Edgewater Drive. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Before we start the consent agenda, I'm going to have Tanya give us an update on what's going on.
Good morning, Supervisors. Hurricane Irma, we'd like to talk about that a few minutes in our facilities. Can you hear me okay? We are under a hurricane watch. We are not under a mandatory evacuation. This hurricane watch, we are expecting peak winds 75 to 95 miles an hour with gusts up to 130. My recommendation for any residents that don't feel comfortable in their homes to take shelter, we do have a list of shelters that have just been issued beginning at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. There are no shelters in the district. Highlands County Schools, I believe the high schools, all three high schools are shelters. The Highlands today, or the Highlands New Sun Center, which is at the fairgrounds, is also a designated shelter for anybody who may want to take part in that. District operations, our front doors will close today at noon. We may continue to keep the phones open this afternoon at the district office. We're going to start our full backup of our server at 2:00 p.m. We may do two backups. That'll take about eight full hours. Our backup tapes will be stored at the clubhouse and they're safe. We feel confident that our facility at the district office structurally is in good condition to withstand these kind of winds. Of course, we don't know because we've never had this come up before, but our computers and our servers are critical to our operations and our data, number one. Number two, the golf courses will shut down this afternoon, starting tomorrow morning, correct? Through Monday. The district office will also be closed on Monday. We do expect tropical storm winds through Monday afternoon. And as soon as the curfew is lifted by Highlands County, operationally, our roads crews, our utility crews, everybody will be assessing damage and checking on our water plant. Our water plant will be taken offline from electricity probably sometime on Saturday, meaning we will be without electricity in this district, and I can expect at least a week or more. Do we have a priority? I believe we do. Because of Florida Hospital, there's no guarantee. If you look at the size of this hurricane, with Hurricane Charlie, that's about the times that we were out without electricity, but Hurricane Charlie was not even close to the size and to the damage that this hurricane can cause. So, if I miss anything, water plant, the reason we're taking it off of electricity and to generator power is so that it will prevent surges. And so, the generator system is the most reliable system to keep this water plant up and running. We can run the generator at 100% capacity for 2.3 days with the fuel load that it has. We have, so we're averaging 500 gallons per day on a full load. We don't expect Sunday night and Monday to, for the generator, have, you know, 100% load. And what I mean by that is that the use of the water Sunday night is not going to be a lot, okay? I expect water use to be very minimal on Sunday night. So, at the worst-case scenario, we have enough fuel to run our generator for five days. And that's with, we have two 500-gallon backup diesel tanks as well. So, does that sound about, that's at full capacity. If this generator, if the water usage is not at full capacity, which we don't expect it to be, it may last a little longer. Am I on track with that? Okay. Taylor Oil has promised to assist us and give us priority to move fuel if we need it, because of the tanks that we have are not located by the water plant, they're located off-site. So, we don't have any way to move the fuel to the water plant. Taylor Oil is really our only option unless we use gas cans. That is, that's not really an option, but that is, that would be in the last resort. So, as long as Taylor has fuel past five days, I think we'll be okay as far as diesel. The district office will be open as far as electricity goes. We do have a full generator diesel backup system to the district office. We are going to, we're going to close on Monday to customers until we assess what the damage situation is. But the district office, being that it will have electricity as long as our generator power is working fine, please feel free for that to be kind of like a central location for people to meet. If Comcast is working, we will have Wi-Fi. Do not expect Verizon to work. Do not expect AT&amp;T to work. If you need to communicate to family members through iPhone, we know we've talked about how we're going to do that. Do that through FaceTime. Do that through Facebook Messenger. Zello is another app that you can download for iPhones. I don't believe it works on Androids. Android Communications, what's the name of the app, anybody? Sorry. Tango. Tango is an app for Android that you can communicate to family members using Wi-Fi. You have to have Wi-Fi, but don't expect cell phone services to work or text messaging. I'm just, this is worst-case scenario. So, did I miss anything? I'm sorry. Recreation facilities are closed tomorrow, Sunday, and Monday. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
A question. The lift stations out there, are they on demand? In other words, if they, will that kick over to generator power? At the various, like the Metanses and the various locations where we have lift stations there?
The lift stations have generator power and they are full. Is that correct?
Yes. But they won't be running, they'll be, they'll kick in only as necessary, correct? Or are you going to be running those as well?
When the power goes out, those generators will run on those lift stations. Now, we don't have generators on every single lift station. Is there one lift station that we have no generator on? Do we know where that's at? All of them have them? Okay, I thought there was one that didn't. But those are, that's for our gravity system. Now, let's, our low-pressure septic, you know, for those people like in the areas of Deer Run, areas of the Preserve, probably have a low-pressure tank. And you want to talk about that a minute? That's a little bit different scenario.
On the low-pressure systems, each home, I don't know if you're familiar with them, each home has their own tank and has their own pump. If the home doesn't have a whole-home generator, that pump's not going to run. But there usually is at least a day or two of capacity at minimum. It could be more depending on when the pump ran last, you just don't know. But it's good to urge the citizens not to use the toilet any more than they need to. Don't take any extra showers than they need to if they're not, if they don't have power. I know that doesn't sound good, but it's better to be able to flush your toilet than to smell good at this point in time.
That's a true statement. So, we want to, we want to provide this community water without electricity. That's our goal, okay? But we don't want citizens to take advantage of it. Use it only as needed. As few showers as you need, as few flushes as you need, you know. Now, would it be advisable to kind of fill some water maybe in a bathtub so you could use it to flush toilets possibly? Or is it still, it doesn't matter? Okay, okay.
Thank you. Also, I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, but I would like to make a suggestion. We're going into the budget as the next item, I believe. And it's the, almost, well, it will be the last budget meeting, and then we'll have the adoption of the budget. I'd like to suggest that maybe we look at holding off purchases until we assess if there's the damage to the golf course, or the streets, or anything that we need to spend money. We might reallocate some of that money that we might have put into the budget for other issues instead of trying to do an emergency fund. I don't know what the thought process is. Maybe the board is not interested in that, but that's something I'd like to see done. That's one item. I'd also like to consider, and this is not going to be favorable to a lot of people, but if in the event, maybe we can discuss it, if it's board discussion or wherever, to possibly do a special assessment to cover or fund some of the damages. I know in the past, they did a $25 or a $30 assessment to each homeowner to cover some of the damage, the cost of damage. And thirdly, based on the article, it was in the paper yesterday, and I spoke to you yesterday a little bit about it, I think that since we fall under the Highlands County, as you explained to me, and Spring Lake and Sunland Lake is a special district, also falls under that. However, there have been some places that have taken that precaution and have, in fact, declared a state of emergency for their town. And I'm thinking that maybe that's a good idea for us. That will help you in the event that you need to hire people or bring people in, you won't have to go through the process and call special meetings. So, those are three things I'd like to, you know, possibly address, whether it's at this time or at another time.
We can certainly issue a state of emergency for the district. We don't have a formal resolution for that, but I want to tell you, the policy manual does give the general manager complete authority over emergency situations, and that's a good thing. I think with our cities, that may be much different, but yes, our cities are doing a formal declaration of state of emergency. We can certainly do that by vote if we feel necessary.
Yeah.
But FEMA, we got to realize that FEMA is available for us, and we, any damage that we have, we are hoping that we can apply, and Tenille has worked with me on that this week, for applying for funds in the event we have infrastructure damage over time. All of those things can be reimbursables for us. Golf course damage, whatever the case is.
Right.
So, we're hoping that FEMA will step in in any event that there's severe damage, and we'll be able to be reimbursed.
And I know that you have the authority to, in emergency situations, go out. My point was more to say if we make a formal proposal, even though we want to have a resolution at this point in time.
We can do that.
To maybe, to maybe do that. If the board's agreeable to it, and that way, it helps us, it kind of gets something on record as well. So, just a thought.
Well, I mean, if you guys want to, I mean, we haven't got to the consent agenda yet. If we go ahead and do the consent agenda, then we can bring it up in the action agenda after we've done the ones that are on the list.
Okay.
And if someone wants to make a motion to declare a state of emergency, you know, that's a fine, fine thing.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I shall move.
Second.
Any comment? Any public comment? Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the action agenda.
Motion to accept the action agenda.
Second.
Any comment?
I pretty well went through it. I'm comfortable with what we have.
Any public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
First thing on the action agenda is appointment of a vice president. I need a motion to, for a vice president.
Who nominated Mark Camp?
We need him.
Do we have a second? I'll step down, I guess, and second that.
Can we have more than one?
Okay, there's a motion and a second right now.
Okay. Can we have more than one?
You can have a discussion, you know, we can have a discussion, we can call for a vote, but there's, as I said, there's a motion on the table right now.
Okay.
Any discussion? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yeah.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Congratulations. Public hearing resolution number 2017-09-0849. A resolution of the Sunland Lake of Saving Improvement District to establish and adopt a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2018 based on the estimate of revenues and the expenditures for the district's general utility and golf funds, establish the levy of operation and maintenance assessments for the fiscal year 2018, and confirming findings of benefits, providing for conflicts, providing for severity, durability, and providing an effective date. I need a motion. I need a motion.
Motion to accept.
Well, second, sir.
Any comment? Public comment?
Is the intention to go through this or not?
Yeah, if you want to.
Okay.
Right now is the time to do it.
Yeah, okay. I would like to go through some of the budget items. Page three, there's a, of the golf. Jim did an excellent job outlining some of the cuts and changes that he had. I do have some concerns about it. He's reduced the labor costs in cutting two workers on the golf course to save some money. He's reducing the annual fertility programs from six to four. He's reducing the membership marketing budget. He's reducing the F&amp;B labor by cutting waitress coverage. He's cutting cleaning in the clubhouse, and he's reducing operations labor. I applaud him for making all of these changes, but at the same token, if we're trying to provide the best product we can, and we know we're struggling a little bit with some of these areas, we finally got the courses back into shape through various fertility programs. We're finally getting some of our food and beverage operations where we have adequate waitstaff to service the individuals coming in, both from the outside and from inside. And I just, I guess I'd like to ask Jim how much you think, because you've outlined these, what you really believe the impact will be, or if you feel you can get around it with some additional revenues that you'll be taking in.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Camp. As you look at that sheet, what happened was that at the last meeting, there was a consensus of the Board of Supervisors to present a budget with a $250,000 assessment level. And it was something that came up at that meeting that I was unaware of. I was, I was unprepared. It was a $180,000 cut from where we had, had been. And so, when I went back after that meeting and reviewed the numbers that had, had been presented, I was under the impression that the amenities number had been overlooked. So, in our normal budgets, not this budget, this is the first year that amenities actually rolled into the whole assessment amount, but in previous budgets, there was an assessment for the golf club, and then the district also wrote a separate check for the assessment of the amenities. And when I looked at those numbers, I thought they had been omitted. So, I actually called up all of the supervisors, you know, and spoke to them basically about, you know, to me, our vision and our mission of where the club was going, and that I didn't think a $250,000 assessment amount would work to keep us going in that direction, and that we needed a $330,000 assessment amount to do that. So, the budget I presented was actually a $330,000 assessment, but I felt compelled to list, you know, since the board had asked me a $250,000 budget, where I would get that other $80,000 if I had to. So, those things that you read are, is the next $80,000 that I think would have a detrimental effect on our ability to keep delivering the services and the amenities that we have. I think the $100,000 that we cut out of the budget a lot was, was a lot of tightening, you know, was moving, as you look at it, it was a lot of tightening of moving up some revenue numbers and tightening down expense numbers. But that last $80,000, as you so well pointed out, was really cutting to the meat. You know, when you start looking at decreasing, you know, we already have 18 workers, so we have one laborer per hole, which in the industry, it's more like 1.4. So, when you look at, at cutting back further, that is going to, you know, affect the product. When you look at your fertility, and you look at cutting from six to four, you know, when you look at a 33% cut, that is going to affect the product. So, I believe that the $330,000 assessment that we have, it's a tight number. I think that revenues, if we have a good year, if the stock market continues where it's been, and we have, you know, an average to better weather year, we can achieve this budget, you know, 80% of the time. But that $250,000 number, you're going to see it this year, and then you're going to see it even more next year. Because one of the problems with the golf course is that you don't hide it. You know, so in other words, if you're not funding the golf course to the level that you need it to be, if it's an eight this year and you underfund it, next year it'll be a seven. Then the year after that, it'll be a six, and it'll be a five. It doesn't immediately go in one year from, you know, where it's at to where it's going to fall. So, hopefully, I answered your question. I think 330, we can continue to deliver the product. At 250, I don't believe we can sustain a budget, you know, an assessment level at that, at that rate over a period of time, unless things, you know, unless the outside revenues change.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mark?
Yes, yes, I do. Since this is going to be the final budget, basically, and we're going to adopt the budget next month, yes. I had a conversation, I'm trying to figure out something here, and I had a conversation with Tenille, and one of the things that I'm, and she'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, please do, because we had this conversation. I asked her about a couple of things. On page 16, under the advertising and marketing, and then the billboard design and install, and she explained to me about the billboard design and install, which had been explained once before, it had to do with, in the event that, when we discussed the digital signs later on, the digital billboard, that would probably come out if we went with a digital billboard, because that's for the vinyl in the installation, correct? Okay. The second part was $63,000 for marketing. At that time, I didn't really realize until Omar sent out a, by the way, it was a great report that you sent out, thank you. He sent out a report, and it has, last year it was 54.5, okay? We spent some money under this year's budget, some extra money, 15, was it 15,000? Tenille?
15,000 is what is going to be carried over.
Is carried over.
Right.
Okay, so we didn't spend the 15,000. So, we went from 54.5 because we didn't, I'm just trying to understand, because we didn't spend the 15,000, so now your requirements are for a $63,000 budget?
Well, we did spend some, we have, it's a larger, it's a larger budget number than just 15, that we, because we have spent some marketing money, and actually, there'll be some more coming in this, this month to finish out, to get ready for the season. But it's 15,000 that we're leaving from this year's budget that we're carrying over to bump up to the 63,000. So, it's the 50, the, I don't have the numbers, pardon me, because I didn't.
The budget last, and, the budget last year was 54.5.
Right.
Okay, no?
This year, the budget's 35.5.
35.5.
We haven't spent $15,000.
You haven't?
We started the budget process this year at a 54.5, and then we decided to carry over that unused 15,000 to get it to the 63,000. So, the 54.5, it started the budget process this year.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
It wasn't last year.
It wasn't last year.
Last year was 35,000.
Great, thank you very much.
Just a minute, just a minute, sir. We'll call you up in a minute.
That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, sir. Go, over there.
Yeah, I want to make a point of order. My name is Dr. Hernando Castillo, I reside here in Sunrise Drive. And I think that we should consider the imminent catastrophic event that is coming with the hurricane here right now, because we're going to have a flooding over here, we have a bad system of drainage, and the ditches are full of water, and we don't know where the water is going to go, but inside of the houses. I think that we should discuss what we're going to do about this. Over 20 years ago, we have a regular rain over here, and the water in Sunrise Drive was up to here. Now, Irma is a catastrophic hurricane, category five, and I think that this has priority over anything else, and we should discuss it right now, what we're going to do about that, about the water. Because the water is coming, and we're going to have a real problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Ray Brooks, resident. I'm just trying to understand something, if you guys could help me. Supervisor Camp brings up a point about challenging the budget, the golf budget of, what it was, 80,000 or whatever it is. Kurt Spohn, he responds that he agrees with him, that indeed it's going to put a hardship on the, on the club, and then it just like stopped. So, is that how it works? Or do you guys, is it a dead issue now? Or do you guys discuss it? Or what, does anything happen to that conversation, or is it just dead?
I'll answer, I think I'll answer that. Mr. Brooks, when I presented my budget, I kind of presented two budgets. I presented a $330,000.
I understand what you said, and I understand what he said, but nothing came of it. So, I don't know, is anything going to happen? Is there a conversation? Or we just ignore it, and we, and it is whatever it was?
Yeah. My perception is we're not doing the 80,000 worth of cuts that would have gotten it to 250, that we're entertaining the $330,000 assessment that was presented that will keep, that'll keep us operating at the level we're at.
The plus 80,000 is now in the budget.
Yes, sir, it was taken out. I just, I put, I showed them where the 80,000 would have to come from if they wanted to get down to the 250.
But that's not the case, it's actually in the budget.
It is in the budget, yes, sir.
That's why I got a little confused, thank you.
Kurt, do you want to say that? Okay, okay. Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Larry Crick resident, I'd sort of like to piggyback on his comment. We've got a disaster facing us, and we need to discuss that. Are you gonna wait till the end of the meeting to discuss it, or what are you gonna talk about? What do we do with water up to our-
Well, I was gonna add it, because Mark wanted to add it to the action agenda later on, but, so that's what, we intend to talk about it then.
Okay, well, I think talking about spending money without realizing the fact that you've got a whole lot of stuff going to happen, and that team is broke, but-
Tanya, I'm not sure, but, and this is just a general comment, from what I hear, this would be more of a wind event than water.
We can expect eight to 12 inches of rainfall within the 24 hours, is that correct? Up to 12, so that's a foot of rain, okay? My recommendation is, if there are any sandbags left, you sandbag, if you're in low-lying areas, sandbags can assist in preventing, but we can't, the district can't do anything about the rain, and no employees can be out in tropical storm winds, and as long as there's a curfew, you know, you can't look to the district to protect your homes, we have to protect our own homes right now, okay? That's, that's all, that's all the advice I can give as far as drainage. We do have a lot of areas of concern, but we've done some drainage work in the last year, Unit 5, Unit 2, Calatrava, Sunrise, and we, you know, I don't know what to expect when rain is gonna fall that fast and that much. It'll take, it might take a little time to drain off, okay, but the district can't protect your homes, you have to, you know, take action for yourself, whether it's sandbags, plywood, I don't, tarp, I don't have any other advice, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna really speak for the board, and they can talk, but I know I'm, I'm ready and willing, if we have some damage, we will get it fixed. But right now, it's, I think right now, we just gotta sit and wait, but we are prepared to take care of Suna Lake.
Yes, immediately, when that curfew is lifted, all of our crews are gonna assess the damage. Our first priority are the roads and the streets. If there are power lines down, we will contact Duke Energy immediately, we can't drive the roads, you know, if there are power lines down. Trees, limbs, we are prepared to handle, to get the road, our first priority is to get the roads clear, okay? Anything, anything else?
No, I think, I just, just, you out there with some concerns, we all have concerns, and we're gonna, we'll be on top of it as much as we can once the storm passes, and-
And make sure your insurance policy is emailed to you electronically, that's another advice I give.
Michael?
Yeah.
We have cleaned more ditches in the last year than we've probably done in the last 10 years, okay? So, I mean, we are prepared for it, but like Tanya said, we can't control the rain, but we're more prepared now than we were six months ago.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the board's done a pretty good job in addressing the drainage, and we're gonna do more, so, it's all we can do, guys, but we will, we will react as soon as we can.
We certainly appreciate, Bill Norcross resident, we certainly appreciate the concern there. Mark Camp brought up something at the last hurricane, that we had an assessment, and I think it was a $50 assessment, a lot of people didn't pay that, so, and it kind of caused a little animosity, I mean, of those that did pay and those that didn't pay. So I like to have that as a, some kind of concern, if you're gonna have a 20 or 30 dollar assessment, which I think is very reasonable, to make sure it's in stone. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, just, just so I'm clear, when we vote on this, which, which one are we voting for, the 330 or the 250?
The budget was prepared at the 330,000.
Okay, very good. Chrissy, can we roll call?
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Charlie, can you hear back there? I know in the past, people have said they can't hear back, can you hear? Thank you.
Next resolution is Resolution Number 2017090850, a resolution of the Suna Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve Change Order Number 15 with EO Cook Construction Company to extend the completion date for the public works facility project until November 1st, 2017. Any comment?
You have to do a motion.
I don't like it, but I don't think we have a choice.
Okay, I need a motion first, I'm sorry.
I'll move. Do you accept?
Say it.
Okay.
Any comment?
Yeah, I kind of, my sentiments are the same as Larry's. I can envision we'll be sitting here another couple of weeks with another extension. You know, I just find it very interesting that we have all of these projects, and we have terms and conditions built into the projects, and I understand change orders and things of that nature will certainly make a difference. Contractors typically, I would think, build in a buffer for weather, especially being in Florida, and a lot of other different things. The fact that they had a supervisor that wasn't maybe doing the job that he or she should've been doing also contributed to this. But the bottom line is, have we ever, ever penalized anybody for being late, or do we always give them that extension? The $200 a day, for an example, when we build it?
Not that, to my knowledge, we have not ever enforced a penalty.
And I appreciate that answer, but now my next question is, why the heck do we even have these?
Well-
I'm just asking the question.
Why do we have the penalty clause?
Yes.
If we don't have it, we definitely can't enforce it. So, I mean, like I said, the board has, in the past, has always chosen to, you know, to not enforce it or to grant whatever extensions have been requested, you know, that's, but if they don't have one, we definitely can't enforce one.
Just a quick background, okay? This contract originally was signed with a completion date of August 8th. The change orders that have happened have been initiated by the district, meaning we have found things along the project that we want to change. So the change orders are not to the fault of the contractor, you know, they're, they're changes that we have recommended. The, the current contract completion date is September 20th, so there has been some time change, some small time change orders done, along with those other change orders that were below $10,000 that I approved, okay? So we're right now with a contract completion date of September 20th, that's where we are right now. I can expect, what, two to three weeks for inspections by the county unless there is severe damage by Hurricane Irma, all of that will get pushed aside. Any, anything further? And I know there were some complications at the beginning of the project, and Drew can talk about that, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not blaming the contractor, I'm not really blaming the district, but this is the first time change order that the contractor has asked for, in this scenario, yes.
And I know that the district has asked for changes.
Yes, we have, we have.
We have, and I understand that, and some of those changes were pretty minor, but I'm not gonna go into-
Right.
But they didn't even put that in their request, they kind of said rain delays, they said high winds delays, utilities not responding, I understand that, and I don't quite understand what this delay in approving the credit terms for the direct purchase of the metal building, but, you know, we're gonna approve it, so I don't want to take up a lot of the board's time.
Well, I can briefly discuss the delay in the credit approval. Early on, we decided to save some tax money, I don't know if you remember that, for direct purchase. Since the, if the contractor were to purchase it directly, or just under their own on the original contract, they already have credit, they purchased from Dean multiple times before, so they're okay. Well, Dean didn't accept that we had plenty of money to back it, they wanted to go through a full credit approval before they would even, they would even take the order and start manufacturing the building for delivery, so I think that was 30 days or more in itself, so that was a major setback, to say the least.
Thank you.
I got, I got some questions, I guess. I mean, can you, can you put a day count to all these different requests? Like, you said the credit was 30-day delay, utilities not responding, what's that got to do with building a building, or grading a lot, or building a wash station? I can't see how that would delay anything. High winds, how many days do we have high winds that we can't put steel on a building? How many rain delays do they have? My point is, how many days did that work site set idle with no work being done whatsoever on perfectly good days, when they could've been working? But, no, they were someplace else working on another job. I just get a little myth, and these guys always asking for extensions, and no credibility in terms of how they actually worked the job. I bet there was more than 50 days that work site set idle and nothing happened. So can you, can you give me a better light on terms of why my comments are off base here, or whatever?
I don't wanna say your comments are off base, I agree completely with you. I just know there are, there are some legitimate days, but I don't, I don't know how you could, I don't know what caused the delays when they didn't work. I don't, I don't know if they had trouble with their subs, I don't know if it was due to the fact they were waiting on Duke Energy to hook something up, so they couldn't do anymore. I know, I'm not saying that that was the exact case, but they do have some legitimate days, that is written in the contract, if it's a rain delay, they're allowed to take that. The reason, I don't know why they didn't give us exact dates, but if you want to-
They have a log, they should have a log of all, every day with every date and what happened, yes, we can certainly request that.
Well, I think we're gonna give them the extension, we don't really have a choice, but I would like the penalty to be enforced, and raise it from $200 a day to $1,000 a day. So they can take it serious, and they know November 2nd, there's gonna be a bill for a thousand bucks, and every day after that'll be another thousand bucks. This is stupid, because sometime in October, they're gonna say, well, we need another 30 days, and we just gotta stop this stuff. I mean, we got a parking lot by the clubhouse that looks like a junkyard, because our maintenance building isn't done, and now that gets extended another 60 days. It's just, it's foolish.
I think people get-
And I think we gotta toughen up here a little bit. Let people know that if they're gonna do work for us, to take us seriously.
How do we go down that road, and, how do we do that? How do we charge them now, we can't try-
I'm not saying charge them now, I'm saying November 1st, start charging, and let them know, when he signs a contract, that there's a $1,000 charge per day, and we're not gonna waiver on it. Just let them know that upfront, so there's no excuse.
We have to do, we have to include that in this change order.
I understand that, but I'm saying, when you write it up, write it up with some meat in it. Or teeth, whatever you wanna call it.
You know, we hear the excuse all the time, well, you know, this is Florida, I mean, please. And the other thing is, just, just as a little piggyback on what Kurt said, I actually did, I have the numbers, I'm not even gonna give them to you. You can go online, there's four rain stations in Sebring that will give you precipitation by the day for the year, and by the month as well, so if somebody's really curious as to how many days we had of rain, it's pretty easy to check it out.
Anybody else? The only thing I'll say, David, is Kurt's exactly right, we gotta do something. I don't know if it's $1,000 a day, or-
Well, I guess that's the issue right now, is the, the, the change order is attached to, you know, which is what we're voting on, so if we wanna make an amendment to modify that change order, then we need a motion and a second to, to make that modification to the change order.
Well, I would- I don't see anything in there where it says a penalty.
Well, the penalties, the penalty is currently in the contract, $200 a day, $200 a day is what it reads right now.
200, yeah.
Yeah, so if we want this-
So we're gonna change this to-
So what we're talking about is modifying, that if we're gonna, we're going to grant this 41-day extension, but it's also gonna come with, we're gonna modify the penalty clause from 200 to 1,000, if that's what I'm, if I'm understanding your request.
And, and guys, I would, just a suggestion, that we keep it at 200 and make sure they know that we want it done. I mean, that's just, but we gotta do something, Kurt's exactly right, everything we do is delayed, delayed. The roof, everything we've done. So it's up to you guys.
We already given them a $200 waiver already, that's my whole point.
August 20th.
Well, there you go. So a thousand bucks to me is nothing.
Yeah.
So why go soft on these guys?
Do we have a motion for an amendment?
I'll make a motion to amend the, the resolution to include a penalty effective November 1st.
2nd.
Oh, 2nd, I'm sorry, November 2nd, and apply a penalty of $1,000 a day.
Now, technically, also, since we're, we're amending this change order, this change has already been executed by the engineer and by the contractor, so what we're basically talking about doing is a counteroffer. If they want the 41 days, they're gonna have to accept the $1,000-
Right.
Correct. Just so you guys understand it.
Sure.
And if they don't accept it, we'll start charging $200 a day at September 20th, right?
Agreed, that's how it works.
That's the way it works.
All right, perfect. I'll second that motion.
Create any more discussion? Public comment?
Hi, I'm Shirley Schuman Allegra, I'm a resident. The only comment that I have, and obviously, legal would certainly be able to address it, is with the extension with the pending hurricane, insurance coverage for, obviously, a building that is in progress is different than having a building already in place. Anything that is caused from damage from debris from the site, et cetera, just wanting to make sure that that's something that's addressed as we look at this. And then obviously, there will be another extension due to the hurricane.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear what she said, that-
I didn't hear the last part.
That air conditioner-
The air conditioner kicked in.
I said, and obviously, there will be another delay due to the hurricane.
Yes.
Yeah.
Michael, if this storm hits as bad as it's supposed to, we may not have, he, they may not have subs to come finish this, you know, I, to be honest with you, all right, I've been there every day.
We can deal with that, I-
I understand that, but I've been there every day, all right, they're not as bad, you know, we put them, we put them behind 30 days ourselves, okay? And I figured out that we were behind 40 days. I think, you know, I think this is pretty harsh what we're doing, honestly, you know? They did have wind, you know, they, I mean, they did have days that they couldn't work, it was too windy, the guys had to come out there, it was, we did have rain, there was materials, you know, that they couldn't get. I think we're gonna hurt ourselves if we do this, I really do. I mean, I really think we should think this out, you know, to fine them $200 a day is, you know, it's not gonna make that much a big difference to us. I really think, with this storm coming, they could be behind because of that too, and they're gonna come back. I mean, I don't think we should rush, rush this project. You know, we want it done right, Drew and I are there every week, I'm there every day, right? We want it done right, we made changes to better the building, and some of it's our fault.
We already gave them a 42-day our fault extension.
But Kurt, 30 days is our fault, that we know of.
The point, the point is, this will not get executed till after the hurricane is here and gone. The point is, this will not get executed until after the hurricane is here and gone. Because this one, nothing in this paperwork will happen until Tuesday or Wednesday.
Right.
So we'll know the answer. And if there is a big problem, then we will change it. But right now, to me, just let them know we're serious.
I understand that, but I just, I don't know. I like, I don't know. I just think we're going to hurt ourselves if we do this.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comment? Okay, any more comment up here?
So technically, we need two votes. We need a vote to add the amendment and then a vote on the motion as amended.
We need a motion to...for the amendment.
You already got it.
Yeah, we need a vote.
I'm sorry.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
No.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
So now voting on the resolution as amended.
Okay.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Sorry, we need a motion and a second on the resolution as amended. Now.
I'll make a motion to accept as amended.
Second.
Okay.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District approving the second amendment to the general managers' contract with Tanya Kennedy.
Make the motion. We approve it?
Second. All right, real quick, just to kind of let you know how I addressed this as the second amendment to the contract. You'll see, rather than do a...the contract originally was going to terminate on September 30th of 2018, so I just made, instead of keeping it as a three-year contract, we made it a five-year contract. There's the increase, which will be effective October 1st, 2017, with the pay increase that we talked about at the last board meeting. And then since you wasn't using the car allowance, I replaced the car allowance with the golf membership that we had discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, any comment up here? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
No.
A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District approving the contracts between the PGA and the Sun and Lake Golf Club for the Latino-American and Canadian Tour qualifiers. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just got these yesterday, but the only thing that I noticed in reviewing them was, if my recollection serves, is the...there was a...the plan was that it was for $50,000 if we both tours, if we host both tours. But if we only host one, that number is supposed to be $28,000, if I recall correctly. So if it was only going to be the Canadian, or am I misremembering?
We didn't...we only approved both tours.
Okay. I just couldn't remember if that was...but the final resolution.
I don't know if it will help, just for the benefit of maybe for Joe. And I know Joe does a lot of research, but I thought I might give him a little brief history. I know that this is already up for...the resolution's up for a vote. You know, this started in 2012 when we brought the Latino Tour in, which is in February. Things changed quickly. The dynamics changed quickly within the district. And we'd continued that tour year after year and added the McKenzie Tour, the Canadian Tour last year, which was very successful. You know, trying to balance everything with bringing in revenue to the district and then also making sure that the residents, both golfers and non-golfers, see the benefit of this. And I'm going to fast forward to July of 2016, when this board, well, actually, two of them weren't on the board at the time, when the board pretty much took a consensus, I guess it wasn't called a vote, a consensus, and five of them indicated they did not want to see this tour come back. And by the way, I have the minutes for all of these. If anybody wants a copy, I can give it to them. At the same time, even Jim Kurzborn, and jump in at any time, Jim, if I'm incorrect or if I misquote something, Jim even said at the time that he wanted to cancel it for the January 2017. And we, as a board, said, you know, "You can't do that to these people. They've already..."you know, "We've made a commitment to them." So at that time, it was pretty much decided, or everybody thought on the board that it was decided, that this wasn't going to happen again. All of a sudden, this thing reared its ugly head back in March of this year, and then it started to go discussions back and forth between the existing board, bless Joe, okay? And on April 7th, Jim didn't know, you know, he wanted to bring in the revenue. Some other members on the board said, "Here, you know, what if we went to the membership and said, 'You're going to have to pay $70 more if we don't bring this tournament in.'" So we went around and around on it, and we decided at that time, as a general consensus, not to say no to the tour because the tour came back and basically said to us, "You either do both or we're not coming back." That was their, you know, position. So now we got caught in between that, and we said, "Well, this is a good amount of revenue. We should bring it in." At that time, we said, "Okay, let's go back to the table." And we kind of came up with some numbers there in the minutes...I'd have to double-check the minutes of...in June, that said, "Let's go for $56,000." The next thing I know, it comes back to the board for $50,000, and now it's a resolution to be voted on at $50,000, which, you know, most people didn't even want. I don't know how sometimes these things happen, but the $70 per member was a gating factor at that time to go and say, "Let's go to the members and ask them for that." Well, guess what? We had a 3% increase across the board for all memberships, and it clearly gave us that $70 that some members on the board wanted to receive. So I think we've covered the costs. We're bringing in that revenue. We're not getting a tremendous amount of traction. We had the golf committee, as well as the membership unanimously vote at 63% not to bring that back. Out of all the tours they had on here, be it the PGA Latino, the Warner, or other groups, or even hotel play, and the number-one response was they did not want the Latino Tour to come back. So I'm not even sure why we're voting on a $50,000, you know, contract, considering we had to beg for them to send us a contract. And if you look at the contract, it looks like they've xed out some numbers and just put in...they haven't even taken the time to actually do what I would consider a professional contract. That's my update. That's all I wanted to look at.
Anything else from guys?
Kurt? I guess my question is, why are we voting on this at all? I mean, we already said we're going to do the contract, so why are we voting on a contract? What's the reason for it?
The prior resolution was for Mr. Kurzborn entering negotiations, and these are the result of those negotiations.
We gave...I guess we gave the terms of the contract that we wanted. They accepted it. To me, that's a handshake deal.
No. Yeah, handshake deals don't mean a whole lot nowadays, unfortunately.
Well, unfortunately, they do to me.
Larry?
I thought we'd already accepted. I have to agree with Kurt. I thought it was a done deal. And it was, as far as I was concerned.
Joe?
Just so I understand, the resolution that was passed for Jim to negotiate with them...
Correct.
And that was at $56,000?
No, it's at $50,000.
It was at $50,000, and he got that.
It was $56,000. I believe it was $56,000.
Yeah, I don't think so. My...I'd have to go back and pull the resolution, but the...my recollection is that it was to negotiate both of the...either it was both of them or only the Canadian. Does that sound right?
Yeah, and we started at a higher number, and the tour said that the highest they could come was $50,000, and the board was agreeable to the $50,000 number.
And just to throw in my two cents, I'm still in favor of the Canadian Tour only, but...and I have been from the start. I hope that we can continue to keep the Canadian Tour here. Public comment?
I'd like to add a couple more.
Just a minute.
You know, we have lots of people that are saying, "No, no, no." They don't want it. They don't want it. We have reports that are contradicting as far as really the revenue dollars that we get. We've seen two sets of reports. I actually have the financials here. The first three years, granted, it changed. We went from a January...from a February tour to a January tour. We never know what the weather will be, so it's kind of...you get this guarantee. And we changed that, and we lost money for the first two years, according to Mr. Ford, who was the GM at the time. We saw in the numbers this year at one of our meetings that Jim compiled, or his organization compiled, and even Kurt questioned how he came up with the numbers, and he gave an analogy of, "How do you come up with that number? We could do X amount of golf play per day and exceed public play over and above what was said." You know, you can make the numbers say anything you want. And like I said, I'm more concerned about the community and this golf thing. I mean, there's too many other things we should be looking at in the community besides the golf, you know? And to go and say on...particularly, let me quote, on July 22nd, at the board meeting, okay, that took place, the Latino qualifier, at which time the golf membership had...the golf had asked, and the golf committee was unanimously in favor of hosting the Canadian Tour, but it would be the last year for the Latino-American qualifier. The minister further stated, "It was Mr. Kurzborn's recommendation not to renew the contract because the January timing does not serve the club's best interest. He agreed with the sentiment, saying snowbirds will be displaced an entire week, and he didn't think hosting the tour again would be profitable, even at $26,000." So I don't know where people are going with this whole thing, but the numbers are the numbers, and the comments are the comments.
And I trust your quote, but I don't trust that I said hosting the tour wouldn't be profitable. I mean, that's one quote. The numbers speak clearly that there's profit involved in bringing in the Latino Tour and the Canadian Tour. You know, this is an emotional issue. The tour's been coming for a number of years, and people do like it or dislike it. You know, the second week of January, as we talked, is a very iffy week for weather. But if you look at the numbers, it's very clear that the tourney week, going all the way back from 2014, the revenue of the tourney week is higher for green fees. 2014, it's $27,000 as opposed to $17,000 the week before. 2015, it's $30,000 as opposed to $21,500 the week before. 2016, it's $32,000 as opposed to $23,000 the week before. And the Canadian, which is harder to predict because of the movement of Easter, was above the $10,000 mark. So we're definitely looking at, you know, $10,000 per event to host the events last year as far as financial. And then they have up the amount that they're going to pay us in their offer, seven grand. So it is, as a business, you know, as a business deal, if you're just looking at green fees, it is profitable. So I either misspoke, or I'm not sure of the whole context of that statement. But there are other things, as you brought up, to consider, you know, beyond the financial decision.
All right.
Hey, anybody else? Public comment?
Phil Norcross, good morning. As far as these two tournaments are concerned, it's a very debatable, as Mike would say, it's very debatable subject. And I'm trying to understand, as a member here, for the last 12, 13 years, I cannot remember having two golf courses open during the summer. Yes, we've had projects. We've had cot pass. We have greens replaced. We've had weather conditions. We've had every other problem. And the survey that was taken, well, to try to wrap this up here a little bit, the survey was taken by the general public, and they voted no for the tournaments. The golf committee, as I was chairman of the golf committee, also voted, and they voted no. But Jim was asked to, I think it was probably sometime during that tenure last year, to write a letter to them and make sure that they understand that their contract will be terminated per the board. Board of supervisors also rejected the whole thing. Now it's coming back again. And I understand that, you know, if you have the golf course guaranteed money coming in, yes, because we don't know what the weather's going to be in January. You don't know what's going to be in April. Could rain every day and lose the public play, public money, but you've got the money. I understand that. I think $50,000 is too low for those two tournaments. I think it's good publicity. That's the plus thing. But I think the members just have a problem with, you know, you take a week out for Sonoma, you take a few days out for some other tournament, whether the one golf course or the other golf course is closed all summer, or a good portion of the summer. We've had problems now with the greens. We've played turtle for, what, three months now? It's a problem that I think if people can understand, you will have a golf course, two golf courses, open to everybody for a better portion of the year. And as far as the tournaments are concerned, I think they're good, but I think this thing has been bouncing back and forth too much. It should be resolved one way or the other. Thank you.
Just to put an end cap on this, I'd like to go back, and I can't remember the exact date, but at the end of the year, at the end of our golf season, normally, we have a big golf tournament. And then during that golf tournament, I think it was two years ago, might have been, a little less than that, at that time, a little slips of paper was handed out, okay, to ask to vote on whether you wanted the tournament or not. Our full golf membership, male golf membership in there, voted overwhelmingly not to have it, okay? During that meeting, I asked Kurt to answer a question about that, and he told me to go to the board. He said he wouldn't talk about it in the meeting, okay? Consequently, the board decided with this much population to go ahead with it. Consequently, the board decided with this much population to go ahead with it. The reason was, according to, I think it was Supervisor Miller at the time, said, you know, the, the golf tournament people that voted overwhelmingly not to have it wasn't a representative sample of the district. So, they brought it forward to the, to the board in here with a representative sample. My comment, no.
I got a comment. We'll come back to it.
Shirley Schuman-Alegre. You know, being good steward to the money, it isn't only about what the golf membership wants. Unfortunately, I mean, and you need to know, I'm in support of the golf. I realize what it does for our community, and it's important. However, if we're only asking the people who are golfing whether we should sit here and take an additional revenue, I think that we're really honing on a smaller scale, and you are representing the whole of the district. And so, I think being good stewards of money, you have to consider what it's doing and the impact. We raised the budget for the golf, which, again, I'm not opposed to. However, you need to be looking at the entirety of the district and not just at the golf, because you need to look at the revenue.
Pat Holmes, resident. I thought we had decided that we were going to allow the PGA to come for both of the tournaments, but I, and I thought it was fifty-four thousand. I was mistaken on that. But fifty thousand dollars in the kitty for a tournament that lasts five days in January and five days in April, that's, that's a lot of money, and it's guaranteed money that we'll have in the coffers. We, like you say, we don't know what the weather's going to be like in January or April, and this is guaranteed money, and it will help, help the golf course and help us. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, back to the board.
Okay. When you hand somebody a survey, and it says, "Do you want the PGA tournament or not?" And that's all it says. It does not give you any background on it. The, the people, it is a nuisance, I guess I can call it. You know, they leave divots. As Bill says, our golf course is tied up for, for almost a week. But it was truly not explained in any of the surveys that we've taken for almost anything what the alternative could be. How else could you, would you make up that funds or whatever? So, to say that everybody, the majority of them voted against it, yes, they voted against it, but would they have voted against it if they had had all the facts? I truly do not think so. And I think it's just too much money to throw away. A business can't throw away that kind of money. It's just that simple. Yeah, we raised the dues, but if you do away with this fifty thousand dollars, you're going to come back and take out the things that you just wanted, that eighty thousand dollars for? Because he's already got that three percent in the budget, and he's got the fifty thousand dollars figured in the budget. Figure it any way you want to figure it, guys. That's all I can say.
There's so much controversy over this, and you're right. I really believe that I didn't do a good job putting the facts down. And Shirley's absolutely correct, you know, and I think hopefully everybody on this board looks at the overall picture of this community. And then I listened to all of this rhetoric back and forth. I'm going to quote something here out of one of our meetings. It says here, "Supervisor White said he doesn't agree with the Latino tour because of the damage on the course. The tournament is held during a time when the course isn't able to recover as quickly." And that's a true statement.
True statement.
Okay? So, you're saying that it's not going to recover quickly, it's going to possibly displace some of our members, and you don't agree with it, but now you're building a case to have it. And, you know, and everybody's entitled to change their mind, and I get it. I get it totally. The same argument was in these minutes that, well, if we went and asked the people to pay additional money to recover these costs, how would they accept it? Well, guess what? We've done that to them as well. Okay?
Okay. I don't have, I don't have anything. Yeah, I don't have, I did comment everything that you said, but I do have a change of mind with the amount of money we're involving here, that it's too much money to throw away.
Okay, and I agree. No, no, you can do, no, that's fine. Is there any other comment? Chrissy?
I have one.
Oh, wait a minute.
I guess the thing that I find objectionable is, I thought the McKenzie tour was a great compromise, and it took the Latino tour out of our prime season and left the course available to us. And I, the thing that I would object to most is the PGA wanted to hold a sausage and tell us we can't have one without the other. So, for what that's worth.
Chrissy? Supervisor Camp?
No.
Supervisor Branson?
No.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilton?
No.
Okay, the next item is a discussion on the RFQ 1705 for the purchase and installation of a new electronic billboard to LED National. Anybody want to start? Discussion? It's a discussion.
Well, I'm the one that asked, I'm the one that asked to make this a discussion instead of a vote. And the reason I asked to make it a discussion is, originally, when we looked at this, the sign, which I was pretty much in favor of going forward and pursuing some ideas on it anyway, it was tossed around between the board, and then we realized that we really didn't have some solid foundation for numbers. So, it was suggested that we go out for an RFP to get some, what would be budgeting prices. And that's precisely what we did. We received the bids from two companies, and I read it. And then last meeting, I asked at the end of the meeting if we're going to discuss this, and they said, "Well, we're going to discuss it at the next meeting," meaning this meeting. I see that it comes up on the agenda for a vote, and I'm saying, "Well, what happened to the discussion?" You know, to, to take a board and provide something in front, you know, give them fifteen minutes basically to discuss it, and then call for a vote, I think is unfair to the district. I just don't think it's appropriate. Now, I know there was a presentation that was going to be given, and so, you know, I'm, I'm willing to listen to all of this because I haven't any particular thoughts as to what direction I would go. I do have some concerns about the way the bid was. I can tell you, two bidders, this is always an argument with people. Why do we only get two bidders? This is an emergent technology with these digital billboards, and yet we only can get two, and one happened to be from Texas, who happened to start the company this year in January of 2017, and they're the one we looked at awarding it to. I'm not saying they're not a good company, but, you know, they just started. And I'm just trying to figure out where we're really going with this thing. So, now you can do the presentation, and we can ask questions or whatever.
The vendor's not here because of the hurricane and the travel. They decided to cancel, so we don't have any examples for you today.
Do, do we not have a presentation?
Well, the vendor was supposed to be here, based on my memo. The vendor, did you end up confirming with them yesterday that they, they will not be able to make it here because of the hurricane? Is that correct?
That makes perfect sense, then maybe, maybe I can try to understand, maybe Kurt can help me out on this. I thought he was going to present, because there's a...
Oh, the vendor was going to do a presentation for us, too. But I'll open the floor for any other discussions based on the documentation. We've given you some pictures in there.
Yeah.
And I believe Tenille, you know, has some examples of billboards that you can actually go to and see the size that we're, that we're proposing, a ten by thirty. So, there's examples in the county that you can actually go see of what they look like.
I would be more interested in understanding the associated costs, the sheet, the digital billboard investment cost analysis, and I, I don't know. Can I ask you, Kurt, did you put this together? Did somebody else put it together?
No, I did.
You did it. Did you want to? I just, I just don't under- I, sorry, I don't understand parts of it, so.
All right.
Well, we can wait till the next meeting and have the vendor come, or whatever you guys like to do. You guys have an opinion, either way?
I don't have any opinions.
What would you like to do? You want to delay it for two weeks? When the vendor comes?
I'd like to ask a couple, so.
Go ahead.
Because I can't ask these questions because of sunshine laws. I can't ask these questions, so. Okay. I know I'm missing something here, and I apologize for it. I apologize in advance. In the back, we have a cost of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, roughly. These are estimates. Hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for this digital billboard. Okay? We then have a refund from DOT for the board they took down, which was ten A. We have a down payment from the land sales for a hundred and twenty thousand, with a net amortized value of forty-three-two. We have some annual costs in there for twenty-six hundred dollars. That includes insurance, sign, license, and permit, and electricity for a year. And then we have credit for vinyl wraps, which we're not going to be using potentially because we'll have this digital board. We have seven customer ads per month, a total of fifty thousand dollars or fifty thousand four hundred in the year. And we end up with a projected annual revenue plus credits minus operating expenses of fifty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, or a five-year projected net income of two hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, I don't know how this works. I got the cost of the sign at a hundred and seventy-four thousand. I got the annual operating cost at twenty-six thousand fifty. I've got a savings on the wrap, so I subtracted that, and I came up with a hundred and seventy-one thousand. If we get fifty thousand four hundred in ads every year, it's a three-point-four-year period, or a three-point-three-nine-year period before we even break even. So, I'm not quite sure where I get, and I know you're going to correct me on this, but I don't understand where we get a net profit of two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars because the down payment, the hundred and twenty thousand, and the ten thousand from the DOT, why wouldn't we count that as a cost associated with the board, with the digital billboard? We can't just back that up, can we?
Well, I think the original thought process on this whole thing was that we have land sales here, and I put a hundred and twenty because I thought that was a number, but I found out later it was a hundred and five, that that was extra revenue that was coming in, and I believe Kenya sent out an email or a request to all the board members, saying, "We have this extra money. It's not in the budget. What projects do you guys want to maybe earmark for this?" And she got no response from everybody. I waited a couple of weeks, so I come up with this idea. So, that's where the hundred and twenty grand comes from. It's a one-time deal, and so, that first year profit of eleven thousand dollars is based on that, that revenue actually being extra revenue, not coming out of the general budget, if you want to call it that. So, after the first year, once we get through all the, the cost changes and everything else, we should make somewhere around fifty-four thousand dollars a year after that point, so.
That's if we take the hundred and twenty thousand, that we could potentially earmark for something else. Even though the board didn't do that, I mean, we could put that into ditches or drainage or something.
You could do anything you want with it.
So, we could have done it. Now...
But again, I'll go back to my original comment was, she asked you guys, "Did you want to put it in ditches? Did you want to put it in drainage? Did you?" Nobody responded. So, I'm saying, "We need a billboard. Let's get with the modern times. Let's improve our image. Let's improve our marketability. Let's improve our revenue stream." And this is what I came up with. You know, as simple as that.
I, I didn't respond because I didn't want to spend it.
I didn't think that we're looking to spend it right away.
Yeah, it seems like we got, "Oh, we got money. We got to spend it."
And I'm not sure where we go with this, but I do have another question. And I appreciate it, and I appreciate your explanation. I think it was, you know, I understand exactly now a little better why you went. You have a little box, and it's, I don't know if anybody out there, you have a little box of 2016, 2017 special events for fifty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That's Tenille's organization. It covers the trick-or-trot, the holiday event, the New Year's Eve fireworks, the Dachshund Day, Independence Day fireworks, for a total of forty-nine, and then projected profits fifty-four. So, the profit from the, how does that tie into the sign?
It's just an illustration of how the money could offset other expenses. It's simple as that. It's...
But we wouldn't be taking any of those away?
No.
Oh, okay.
You could do whatever you want with it. I'm just showing you that if you had a billboard, you're bringing in fifty-plus thousand a year, all these extra expenses in terms of the community services would be paid for. So, you've just gained fifty grand. Basically, you're gaining fifty thousand dollars of revenue a year. Simple as that.
But we don't, the ten thousand dollars for the trick-or-trot is not a advertising...
I didn't say it was advertising. I'm just saying those are recreational marketing, you want to call it, marketing expenses. Trick-or-trot is a marketing event. Holiday event is a marketing event. New Year's Eve fireworks is a marketing, they're all marketing events. It's just a way of, instead of saying, "Okay, I can go buy a forklift for fifty thousand bucks that's paid for by the billboard," I just said, I just used that as an illustration.
Okay.
Simple as that.
Thank you.
So, what do you guys want to do with this? Do you want to...
Supervisors, I want to mention also this week, and Tenille found out in talks with Florida Hospital, that they have actually discussed internally for a while the idea of putting up their own billboard because of their high advertising costs. And if, if, you know, if the district, if the board, you know, wanted us to, to talk with Florida Hospital about any of that, we certainly could do so. I'm not sure exactly where that would go, or if there would be any, any idea of a partnership, but I, I think that just in, in conversation, finding that out, and I do know that Florida Hospital has a C, a new CEO. Don't know if he's there full-time yet. But I just want to let you know, that was something we found out this week. That's all.
I guess based on that comment, one thing that you should consider, if they did do their own billboard, they would probably do it somewhere in the neighborhood on their own property, which would be right next to our Sun and Lake sign, which is on the corner of Sun and Lake and 27. You stick a big old billboard up there, you're not going to see our sign anymore. People are going to be looking at the billboard and driving right on by. So, now you're hurting your own marketability, you know, by them doing that. If we put one up, chances are they would hitchhike with us, and we would eliminate them putting a billboard there.
That's a good point. I mean, that's an excellent point. You know, at the last meeting, I think it was Tom Coste, I might be wrong, that asked the question, and I, I don't, we've advertised, I've seen advertising on some of these boards up and down 27, some of the bar events. And maybe that's something we should do for a year to understand if there is a payback for this type of sign. I also, you know, there's a lot of value to having the advertising at 27, on 27. Be nicer if it was up towards I-4 and 27 advertising a little bit about Sun and Lake. It would be really nice, and Tenille and I had a brief conversation about, I don't know how this all happened, but Tenille and I had a conversation about maybe doing advertising, a little different type of advertising at the welcome centers where people come into the state and have these types of brochures. And ironically, I talked to an Annette Lawson, who apparently you spoke to almost the same time, to get pricing on what it would cost. time, to get pricing on what it would cost to have these brochures at various welcome centers. So when people are coming into our state, they know that there's a place called Sun and Lake. They know that there's two championship golf courses, and it's a community where they have tennis and all these recreational facilities. Versus waiting until they get to, you know, Avon Park and say, you know, "Here's what's going on." I just think it would be a great means of advertising. I don't know if you followed up with her at all on it, but it's very inexpensive.
Mark, I give Tanya, I had a resident give me four brochures that, and I think Tanya gave it to Tenille, but it was at the State Line, and four of them from Sebring, and not one, not one mentioned in all four pamphlets of Sun and Lake. So I think they're going to look into maybe.
We'd like to look into pricing.
Like into pricing.
I have the pricing here.
Yeah, I have the pricing. I'm sorry.
I have the pricing as well. But there is stipulations, there's strict guidelines. We're not allowed to advertise our community. It has to be strictly golf course, you know, we have to have strict tourist-type marketing. It can't be marketing our community.
Well, you're very creative. I'm sure you can come up with an idea of how you can attract people down here.
Yes. I was just saying, that's, you know, when we talk about, you know, marketing the community, we can't do that at those particular welcome centers. It would just be drawing to, to the golf course and possibly pickleball, that sort of thing. But I, I, it's in the works to work on it. I've gotten sidetracked this week with everything going on, but it is in my radar to work on something.
Question, and maybe you can answer this for me, because I'm not quite sure. She sent it to me. She said, "The cost is $180.29 per location for a four-by-nine brochure." And then she broke down a magazine-sized type of item. And she said, "These rates are for 12 months of display." Is that $180 per month for 12 months?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure. It's pretty, pretty short money based on, you know, the advertising we could get.
Right.
Mr. Tha.
Yeah, I'm, as soon as all this is over, that's definitely on my list of things to work on.
Good. Good. We still got to decide, guys, what you, how you want to handle the sign or what you want to do? You want to wait for Florida Hospital or?
I'm only one person on the board. I know what my position would be. I don't see, you know, bringing somebody in to present this unless, you know, somebody else wants to do that. But, you know, I can tell you when my vote will be on this right now.
Well, I think, I think we should just table it until we hear more.
I'm sorry?
Can we, can we just table this until?
Absolutely.
Or would you like us to vote and get a consensus and?
No, it's just a, it's just a discussion item right now. I mean, it can be tabled, and when we set the next agenda, we can decide whether or not we're going to put it on the next agenda.
We need to contact the vendor too and find out his schedule and availability. If that's something you're interested in looking at. He has examples and he does have a presentation for us.
Is that something that the board wants?
Do you want that?
I mean, as far as the rest of the board goes, you want to do that presentation?
I think we should, because right now I don't, there's not enough to be fair and vote on it. So can we just table it?
Absolutely.
We do that. I don't know. I don't, I think we're just saving it, because we just discussed it. We have plenty of time to have public comment on the billboard. I thought I answered your question. Before the last discussion on the district-wide zoning, I'd like to bring up what Mark wanted, might want to talk about, about the spending of some, some money or, Tanya, can you help us there? We're okay, aren't we?
Well, I think what Mark was recommending is we could do a, a vote to formalize that the district is in a declaration of state of emergency. And we're fine with that. Just to formally recognize that, that our community is in danger of that. And so I think we can make a motion of declaration of state of emergency with the second, and then we'll call roll.
Okay. Can I have that motion?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to a declaration of state of emergency for Irma. Okay?
Second. Any discussion? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor what?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the discussion on the district-wide zoning. Not, I don't, you Dave?
Yeah, so you'll see the, I think we've got a, hopefully you're happier with the format and it's easier to read. I'm pretty sure I got the majority of the changes that we discussed at the, at the previous meeting. So yeah, if there's any questions, I know Mr. Supervisor McCullough had a couple.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions for you. I guess on page two, under L4, I wasn't sure of the difference between temporary structures and accessory structures. So I was a little concerned about that.
Yeah, well, a structure is, is pretty much anything, you know. If you tie two sticks together, you've created a structure on your property. Temporary structures, I consider things that can be, you know, easily removed. Examples would be exterior trampoline, above-ground pool, you know, things like that, that, you know, can be put up and taken down, you know, a tent, some sort of a shade, you know, those type of things. Accessory structures are actually structures that have to be permitted. Only certain zoning areas have, like a, a good example would be a workshop, detached workshop, a detached garage, you know, things of that nature, part of that, structures that are not part of the main building.
Okay. Second question I have is on page three, under H, it says permitted non-residential structures. And I guess I was wondering why that would be, that comment would be there when it's a zoned residential to begin with, so.
That probably should read accessory structures. I don't have a good reason as to why it says non-residential. The only thing I can think of would be, you know, sometimes in, in certain residential zones, R1 zoning, R2 zoning, there are other types of buildings that you're allowed to put up. But I think probably accessory structure might be a better word there.
Under, same page, under I, the last sentence, says the minimum floor area for second unit in a two-story family dwelling may be no less than 600 square feet under roof. So the way I'm reading that is if you have a duplex, the first unit has to be 1,600 square feet if it's one story, and the second unit can be only 600 square feet. Is that right?
Under the same roof, basically that would be like a, it'd be a mismatched duplex, you know, rather than both, rather than the duplex being a mirror image, one unit being exactly the same as the other, you could have a 1,000-square-foot unit and a 600-square-foot unit. But the minimum unit size would be 600 square.
1,000 on the bottom floor, 600 on the top.
This is one story. Talk of one story.
One story.
It doesn't say, it just says second unit, doesn't say second story. So I'm a little concerned about the appearance of that. I mean, I don't care what they do on the inside, but I certainly care what they do on the outside.
Well, it's under the same roof. It all has to be under the same roof.
Why, why would it have? Why, why should it be that less for the second one? To me, it should be more.
Oh, I mean, it could be whatever you want.
I'd rather change the 1,600 feet, take that down to maybe 1,200 feet, and then make the second unit 1,200 feet. So you've got a 2,400-square-foot building that's a mirror image of each other. To me, it would make more sense than having 1,600 and 600. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that. Any, I'm not done yet.
Actually, when I read that, I thought it was, I was thinking in terms, I wasn't thinking in the same direction. You know, I was thinking of a two-story. That's the way I was looking at it, but now, now what you're saying, and after reading it, it could be a side-by-side.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And then my other, after we got this map, it certainly made all this whole thing a hell of a lot clearer to me anyway, but, so I'm, I would recommend that we focus on zoning for R1 and R2, and we don't make any changes in R3. Just leave it the way it is. Now, the real problem would be, is the section that is north and east of, north of Sun and Lake on the golf course there, over by Bob Butts's house, that, that would be, that's zone R3 according to this map. But everything else is R1 or R2, and that's really the primary focus of our, my concern anyway, is the fact, so, and this unit over by Tanglewood, I mean, nothing will ever happen with that anyway, so just leave it alone, forget about it. And it might make it easier to get it through the county if we're only dealing with R1 and R2 and not R1, 2, and 3, because to me, the way R3 is written, I don't, you couldn't build anything on those lots anyway. They're so small, I don't think, so. That, that's my only comment.
We always have to remember that, you know, while the lot sizes may be small, they could buy multiple lots and merge them together in order to build a larger structure.
But even if they did something over there, I, that's kind of off what I'd call the main property of Sun and Lake anyway, so. I'm done.
I got one comment.
Okay.
On page two, J, at the very top, we've got it at 1,600 square foot minimum floor area, and this is plus the garage, plus carports, porches, patios, so on and so forth. When you start figuring that.
You're reading.
It's excluding.
It's excluding.
Excluding Larry's.
1,600 feet of living space.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, the garage and everything else.
The garage and everything is in addition to that.
Right, okay.
Okay? Now, you take an average garage would be, even a one-car garage, it'd be close to 600 square feet. And that's, that's going to be a pretty small garage. The porches in most houses, and most of them have a lanai out behind of some, some small type. And the front porch, anything that's covered, just figured in it, figure that at least 400 square feet. So now you've got a house that you're going to build that is a minimum of 2,600 feet. We're getting awful close. You're only allowed 30 percent. And a lot of those lots, I think you're going to be over. And I don't think we can get that through the county. You know, if we can cut it to 12 or 1400, I think we've got a chance of getting it through the county. But I, with the county holding all these lots, they would be silly to let that go through the county.
I agree.
You know, you're, you're pushing. I like the idea, because I like big houses there, don't get me wrong. But I don't think it will ever go through the county, and we're pushing it.
Let the county come back, say they want it smaller. Why start out, start out big and let them go?
I don't know. You can try.
As long as we try. Yeah. Anybody else? I'd like to address a couple Kurt's things and Larry's, so we can get that on our direction. What do you want to make that second level, Kurt? 16, 16?
Yeah.
Or if it'd be easier, I mean, I could, we could just remove all that, talk about the garages and the lans and stuff, and figure out what the actual minimum structure size that you guys would want, you know, as opposed to 1,600 square feet of living area, you can say, you know, 2,000 or 2,500 feet, square feet, period.
Well, for a condo, to me, I'd be, I think 1,600 might be asking a little bit too much. I'd be happy with 1,200 and 1,200 myself, but.
I agree. What about you guys?
I don't know. Certainly, I think 1,200 would be more than adequate.
Yeah.
For a condo.
Well, those condos over that they just built on Pebble Beach, on the other Pebble Beach, that quadplex, those are 1,250 feet. And they're, they're a decent size. So 16, I think, would be pushing it a little bit.
Where is that located?
That's on Pebble Beach. That's a two, two, some fourplex. I think there's a one-car garage.
Yeah.
Yes. There were four units.
What would that be zoned?
And zoned R3.
R3. That's in that R3.
We're not talking about you changing, are we going to not change R3 now?
No. My recommend, forget R3, I just use it as an example. If somebody wanted to see what a 1,200-square-foot condo would look like, just cut it in half.
I'd like the 1212.
How big was yours? Yours is bigger, wasn't it? Ron?
I think it's a little over 1,400.
Yeah, okay. I know ours, my Kansas, when we lived there, was 1,100 or 1,200, something like that.
What do you guys think, 1,200?
I think 1,200 for any multi-family should be more than adequate.
Good thing. And you're going to leave the 1,600 in and see what the county comes back.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yep. And Kurt's idea on the R3?
We'll just, yeah, we'll remove that.
We'll just remove that?
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
That's less to ask of the county.
Yeah, because that, that unit 12 is 100 by 50 lots, you know, I mean, that's the lot size. So anybody who buys that, like David said, could replat it and vacate the plats so that you can build multiple units on it. So not really a concern right now because there's no development there.
And I, I go along with Larry's thing, but as long as we watch that, if the county does it, either way or not, but.
Well, and like I say, what we could always do, you know, it's, the county's going to make the ultimate decision, but we can go in and say what we want, and they say, "Well, we're not going to accept something that big." We say, "Well, you know, we can reduce it." You know, we go in there asking for what we want. If they're going to, if they don't want to give it to us, we say, "Okay, well, you know, we'd be willing to drop that down to 1,400 or something to that effect."
Okay.
So the, just so I'm clear, the only change is that we're dropping out the R3 stuff?
Yeah.
Right.
And then the 1212?
1212 on page three. Okay. I'm going to do part two of page three. Okay?
Okay. That concludes the action items, and I'm going to kind of jump through the staff reports because I think our staff wants to get it to work.
Yeah, Mr. Hurley's gone. Omar sent you a report on the EO Cook by email last week, where we are, what percentage completion we are. Jim?
The only updates I would have is that we're closing the food service today at 3:30 and the golf course at 3:30 to get our data back up so we can secure all of our computers and get ready for the approaching storm. Beyond that, we've, you know, brought in everything that we've can, we can. EO Cook has allowed us to put a good amount of our maintenance equipment into the building, into the new building, to get that shielded from harm's way. And we've got everybody available for Tuesday morning who's already not, you know, scheduled for work in the case that we have cleanup, you know, to bring all the staff in to get the golf course and the clubhouse ready to resume business.
Thanks, Jim. Go ahead.
You say you're cutting off the food service at 3:30 today?
Yes, sir. Our original plan was to not do that until Saturday, but with the change of Irma's path, and we're directly, I was going to bring it up right now, we're directly in her, her path. So we've definitely upped our, you know, from 6 o'clock this morning as of last night, when we went home, we were fine, but it, when it bumped west, we're right in the middle of the I. So our, our goal now is to get everything secured and then to release our, our employees as soon as, as we can to let them get home and secure their facilities. We did, you know, on the odd chance yesterday, we thought that Irma could turn, you know, we asked for volunteers who would come in Monday and get us, you know, back going, but with the current path, that's not as viable as it was when it was scheduled to go down the East Coast.
There's a generator backup system on the clubhouse as well, okay? So we have freezers, we have we have freezers, we have coolers that we want to keep operational, we're not concerned about air conditioning and all, all the other, those type of amenities. Um, myself, Mike Hurley, Drew, well, you know, after, after the winds die down, we're going to be assessing damage and making sure our generators are up and running. I do not expect electricity. And that's our, our priority, priority is the water plant. And then, of course, we have the district office by generator, and then also the clubhouse to keep the freezers and, and, yeah, use as much food as you can.
Well, and as a knowledge, Kevin did...
Yes.
Kevin did order in extra non, uh, non-perishable items under the possibility that we have power at the clubhouse and the rest of the district doesn't. So, you know, we know come Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, if people don't have power and the clubhouse is operational, that, you know, that we could be busy with, with district people. So, we look at that as a service, and he, he did bring in extra things, you know, that wouldn't be perishable so we can be as prepared as possible if that happens.
Very good. Okay, I'm going to jump to public comment right now.
Hate to go back, Phil Nocross, hate to go back to the LED signs, uh, but it is a comment that I thought that was appropriate, that, uh, we really appreciate what Kurt has done, is trying to be progressive as far as, uh, uh, trying to advertise the community, and, uh, that's one way of doing it, uh, is through, uh, advertising. The only problem that I have right now with that, with the LED signs, that, uh, you're, you're going out and, and selling other venues, whether it be, like I say, Chin's Dental, or Bob's Garage, or Acme, whatever. And you know, I want to have it, have advertised with Sunning Lake, and Sunning Lake Golf in the area here exclusively. Now, there's been a new twist with a possible signage with, uh, the hospital. Now, that could be a combo. Uh, that would probably be a good idea. I mean, you have at least two venues here, Sunning Lake and the hospital, and I don't, I've had enough signs about everything else. So, uh, I think that's probably, uh, the, the approach. And to bring people in with new ideas. We only have two vendors that have proposals. I think we could have more. We have better ideas. We can incorporate a, uh, a, uh, static sign, maybe, maybe with LED information on it, scroll, corner. There's all kinds of new ideas. And I just want you to be aware that at least the public out here appreciates the thought. But to have more signs about somebody else, I, no. And the, uh, the other idea was to have, uh, um, your brochures, that I think Mark brought it up. Uh, I've been to many, many reception areas, and then you go into the regional area, the north, south, east, west, and they would have the what's available. What's available for golf, or any other kind of recreation, it'd be a cabin, or a train ride, or something like that. So, I, I think that's a very viable thing that I can't remember seeing any pamphlet brochures in, in any of the, uh, areas that I've stopped at for Sunning Lake. I have for North Carolina, Georgia, all the way up the coast. So I think that is a, a good idea, a good project, and, uh, should be institutionalized. Thank you.
Larry Bertell, you didn't think I was going to say anything, right? Anyway, just a comment. Uh, I'm not pro or against anything about the sign. But did you know that there's a sign south of town that says, "Rent me"? There's two signs in Avon Park that say, "Rent me." So that means there's no income coming in on those signs. The other day, the two signs in Avon Park are not there. So I don't know what happened. So I just think, before we say we're going to make some money, let's, let's find out. I'm not against it, but let's find out a little bit more, can we rent? Uh, if we do put in a sign, and we're going to rent a space, who's going to be responsible to see that that's filled? Now, we already experienced, a year or two ago, that we spent money on a GPS system that we're going to sell marketing on the golf, we're going to have on the, uh, something on the golf carts to sell advertising. I don't think we're selling advertising, are we? So I guess we got to really think this through if we're going to do it, and that's fine. But who's going to be in charge of selling that advertising? Is it just going to be, oh, let's have it, and then all of a sudden, we got a sign out there that says, uh, you know, "Rent me"? And I guess, you know, after living here 17 years, and we keep trying to expand Highlands County, and, uh, I think Commissioner Hadley said at one of the meetings that the county's out of money. So to promote those lots that, that they have, that they're probably not going to do anything. So, I just think we have to really think these things through before we spend the money. And I laugh, maybe I shouldn't, but the city of Sebring, for downtown Sebring, is paying somebody $55,000 a year to promote downtown Sebring. And the comment was that one of the things they're going to encourage people to have wine tastings and drink on, on, on Sebring and walk around Sebring. And I laugh, it's, that's been going on for how many years to promote Sebring? It's, uh, desolate down there. And that's basically, what do we need to do to get Highlands County growing? If you go west, you look at Highlands, now Lakewood Ranch, they're expanding really, really eastward. Uh, the other day, I had to go to the...
That's three minutes.
In Varto, and, uh, I don't know how many units just a half hour away are up. But we're not getting any of that growth. And I guess we need to find out how we get that growth. And we've spent a lot of money over the years, and it hasn't come to us. So maybe something new would help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, we're going to go to discussion to and from the board. Is there anything?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I, maybe I'm right, maybe I'm wrong, but this, this voting on this PGA contract, to me, was wrong. Um, the fact that, and I'll call it reneging, call it whatever you want, but I think you're reneging on a contract. Um, I think you just took the Sunning Lake District image into the toilet. It's not trustworthy anymore. We'll promise you anything, but we'll do whatever we want later on. I just don't think it was right. I don't want to be a part of it. You guys like voting on stuff? You can vote on my seat, because I'm going to resign as of right now. I'm done.
Okay. Make that two.
Okay. Uh, it simply was not right, guys. Uh, I don't want to be a part of it. No longer want to be a part of it.
Okay.
I've done, tried to do what the public wanted, and apparently it's not working. So, uh, I, you can have my seat too.
Okay. Uh, the only thing I got is, uh, I'd like to, Dan, you look into having the meetings at the Island View, if you could, see if that's possible.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Could you look into having our meetings at Island View?
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Could you do that?
Yes, we can do that, yes.
I knew, I know we have a new sound system there, right?
We do.
Or we'll have, so...
Having the meetings at Island View, we can discuss that. Yes, absolutely.
Anybody else? Nope. Do you want a public comment?
Shirley Schumanalegre. Um, I'm really sorry to hear both of you, um, are resigning. And I mean that in all sincerity. I'm new to the district. Um, I feel that you are trying to represent the whole. You know, again, I've, I've been here, come here for a number of years, and what I understand is that the perception is that the board is really just representing the golfers. And when I heard that vote, I know it's a weak, but to tell any of the other constituents that the board voted down $50,000 worth of income just to be able to support the few that did some unscientific survey is absolutely ludicrous. I just don't understand it. So I'm very, very sorry to hear that. Um, I'm sorry for the entire board to hear that. And I'm hoping that the rest of the board members feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Well, Shirley, I can tell you that there's not just these two trying to represent the whole district. And us three that voted that way feel we are representing the district, and you're entitled to your opinion. So, that's fine. I think that's all we got. Gerinda?